Open session, open session for board meeting. Why can't I talk? I'm gonna get it together. 1613 is called to order. 3.01, additions, deletions, corrections, modifications, and supplements to the board agenda. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Okay. 3.02 is the approval of the agenda and pledge of allegiance. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Jen, second by Megan. The motion passes 6-0. Okay, pledge of allegiance. I would like to invite any of our students from Concord or the Idea Center.
Yeah.
Huh?
You gotta vote.
Roll call?
Oh, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed? No one. Okay.
Start whenever you guys are ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Okay, 4.0, special recognitions and learning report and student representative report. 4.01, Concord Elementary, special recognitions. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing both Concord and the Idea Center. We will begin with Concord, so I will turn it over to Principal Mr. Meckler to present his recognitions.
All right, gosh, big crowd tonight. I get it. We were introducing some great people. So, we're gonna do our students first. And we have Lily Scheck and Pierce Aslam, if you guys wanna come up. I told them they had to, I asked them if they had their speech prepared, and Pierce was like, "I'm ready to go," but Lily was like, "You gotta be kidding." All right, so I have the great pleasure of introducing Pierce and sharing a little bit about him. Obviously, this is, these words are from his classroom teacher, Mrs. Turk, who's here in the house. Pierce is a shining example of the Concord way, demonstrating accountability, empathy, integrity, inclusion, and kindness in everything he does. As a dedicated Concord ambassador, he takes pride in planning and emceeing school assemblies, ensuring each event is engaging and meaningful. Whether he's welcoming new students and visitors with a warm smile or lending a helping hand to classmates, Pierce makes everyone feel included and valued. His strong sense of responsibility and unwavering commitment to do what's right sets him apart as a leader among peers. We are so lucky to have him at Concord and in Mrs. Turk's class, so congratulations to Pierce.
All right. So Pierce likes to see me on Thursdays, right? I stop by, right before they go to lunch, I like to stop by, occasionally say, picking with Ms. Curry. Things in her building and around the district, so she likes to high five me and Pierce over there once in a while. So Pierce, we have a certificate recognizing you as student of the month for you. Congratulations there. And then we have a new t-shirt for you. So if you'll hang out here while we do Lily, we'll get a picture together. Congratulations. Thank you.
Well, I have the honor to recognize Ms. Lily Scheck. Lily's kindness and positivity make her a true shining star at Concord. She has a special way of lifting others up, whether it's inviting friends to play, keeping her word, or cheering up someone who's feeling down. Her classmates and teachers admire her, and her name comes up again and again in Classroom Friday shout-outs. It is evident that she makes a difference in people's lives, and it is the reason someone smiles daily at school. She leads with kindness, treats everyone with respect, and brightens every room she walks into. Selecting Lily as Concord's representative tonight was an easy task. Her heart, character, and caring spirit make our school a better place every single day. We are so incredibly proud of you.
So Lily, we have a certificate for you as well, recognizing you as student of the month, and we also have a t-shirt for you. And we're gonna do a picture real quick.
So now, we get to call up our staff members for special recognition. So we have Jean Madrid, who is our, what is it, 24, no, 23, 24 Concord Teacher of the Year. And we have Mrs. Rothe, Becky Rothe, is not here tonight because she has a middle school son apparently involved in cotillion, which is also a pretty big deal. So I have the pleasure of saying a few kind words about Ms. Madrid. I am honored to recognize an incredible member of our Concord community, Jean Madrid. Jean is an experienced and caring educator who builds strong foundations for lifelong learning. She dedicates countless hours to her students' success, staying current with best practices and serving on the Curriculum Writing Committee and the Lindbergh High School Alumni Board. Jean's connections with students and family set her apart. She intends their games, sends handwritten notes throughout the year, and even brought back seashells from Florida for each child. Her attention to detail, dedication to standards, and understanding of young learners make her an exceptional teacher and role model. Special congratulations to Jean Madrid.
So Jean, we have a certificate recognizing you as Teacher of the Year, so congratulations. And then we have a $30. Let's slide over, we have to this way a little bit. It's hard to play.
Even though our Support Staff Person of the Year, Becky Rothe, is not able to be with us tonight, I still would like to share some special words about Becky. So it's my pleasure to share about another amazing member of our Concord community, Becky Rothe. Becky is truly the heart of Concord. She keeps the library running smoothly while always stepping up wherever help is needed, whether it's subbing in classrooms, covering lunch and recess, or working behind the scenes. Her positivity is contagious, and her kindness shines in everything she does. When students couldn't get enough of the Dragon Master Book Series, Becky bought and donated the remaining books herself, so no one had to wait. A true team player and a joy to work with. Becky is an incredible asset to our, to our school, and Concord is so lucky to have her, and it's clear why she is Support Staff of the Year. Guys, ready? 14.04, 4.02 is the learning report. You're up again? Just stay there.
So Tara said we had about three minutes, no, maybe two minutes, 41 seconds. So we're gonna be great. We're gonna go over that, but it'll be fine. All right, so here, the first slide's up. So we're excited to share the positive things happening at Concord. The winter NWEA data shows that students in grades three through five are on track to meet achievement, the achievement goal of 80% on our Compass Plan this year. In terms of achievement, 88% of third graders, 75% of fourth graders, and 80% of fifth graders are scoring in the average, high average, high quintiles for ELA. And 85% of third graders, 80% of fourth graders, and 81% of fifth graders are in the average, high average, or high quintile for math. So in both ELA and math, we are on target to meet our achievement goal. If you focus in on this slide, you will notice combined math data for grades three through five. The graph highlights achievement growth from fall to winter. As the year has progressed, we see a decrease in the number of students scoring in the low or low-average range in math when comparing fall to winter data. This indicates that student achievements are increasing, and all three grade levels, students are moving in a positive direction into the average, high average, high quintiles. Slide. This slide highlights longitudinal growth over the past three school years in regards to growth. As we focus on students achieving average, high average, or high-growth quintiles, you'll notice positive trends over the past three school years. By comparing winter data from our current school year and the two previous years, you can see a trend that supports our confidence in meeting this year's growth target. In the winter of 2023, 45% of our students showed average, high average, or high growth. At the conclusion of the school year, that number rose to 77% of students meeting their growth goal. Similar results are seen in 2024, where in winter, 58% of our students showed average, high average, or high growth. By the end of the school year, overall, or the overall student growth was 70%. Again, we hit our compass goal. As we move into 2025, 50%, 57% of our students showed average, high average, or high growth on winter assessments. This offers us confidence that we will again meet our growth goal of 70% for this current school year. Slide. Moving on to our primary grades, we are again highlighting math growth. I'm excited to share that when comparing fall and winter assessments from the current school year, you'll notice that we are seeing an increase in the number of students on grade level in math. Specifically, 82 students in the yellow, less-than-one-year-below level, grew to perform on-grade level as measured, measured this winter. There were seven students in the red, more-than-one-level-below, that grew to less-than-one-year-below grade level. That's a total of 90 students in kindergarten through second grade who grew to a higher performance level from fall to winter. Additionally, zero students slid backwards in their performance levels.
It is important for students to recognize their peers for living out our core values because it reinforces a positive school culture where integrity, accountability, empathy, inclusion, and kindness are celebrated and upheld. The example shown tonight highlights a third-grade classroom. Here you can see students recognize core values in their peers by submitting shout-outs to their teacher at any time. During class meetings, teachers share these color-coded shout-outs and then adding them to a collective board for everyone to celebrate. At Concord, many classrooms have jobs that foster community, teamwork, and leadership. Students apply for roles that interest them, helping them feel valued and engaged. Fourth and fifth graders can also apply for building leadership jobs after watching a short video about each role. Additionally, students have opportunities to be leaders during whole-school assemblies. The image to the right highlights two fifth-grade students who had the idea of collecting data related to our universal restroom expectations, and they both happened to be our morning hall monitors. Next slide. Our staff is deeply connected, creating a positive and supportive work environment. Based on our Fall Culture and Climate Survey, 100% of staff feel valued and enjoy coming to work. Additionally, 98% of staff feel that their voices are heard and respected. Fun events like undercover dress-up days bring energy to our school, while Wellness Wednesdays promote mindfulness, movement, and self-care. The Concord Fitness Challenge Group, now in its third month, has grown from a January challenge into an ongoing source of motivation and accountability. Our monthly walk and talks encourage movement and meaningful conversations, and our monthly chill and chat provides opportunity for staff to relax over coffee and donuts.
So Concord is proud to introduce Coaching Labs, a new addition aimed to enhancing collaborative professional learning and instructional excellence. This approach provides grade-level teams with a dedicated half-day learning experience where educators work alongside their instructional design coach to refine instructional practices. Since the official launch of this system, December, we've had three grade levels take advantage of our Coaching Labs. To highlight the type of work that takes place in our Coaching Labs, one grade level collaborated to enhance Unit Six of the Benchmark Curriculum by refining the student booklet with higher-level questions and streamlined data collection. They updated resources, aligned slides, and shared improved materials with third-grade teams across the district. Moving into the area of focused learning, I'd like to share about restorative practices and flexible grouping. This year, we partnered with Dr. Mason, who provided three professional learning sessions for Concord staff focused on restorative practices, specifically community circles. Throughout these sessions, teachers engaged in hands-on experiences. They participated in circles, led discussions, and designed their own community circle plans to implement in their classroom. The top picture shows Mr. Schultz and Ms. Stotler sharing out to the whole group about their class motto idea. Flexible grouping is a practice that is growing at Concord. Last year, our fourth-grade team began implementing flexible grouping to best support students' diverse learning needs during our intervention time. This year, we've expanded the practice to include grades two through five. By grouping and regrouping students based on their individual strengths, needs, and learning objectives, we are able to provide targeted support to create dynamic collaborative learning opportunities. The bottom image shows, shows Mrs. Howing leading a session on flexible grouping with the whole Concord staff, which she also presented to Dresel staff this year.
Student satisfaction at Concord centers around three key areas: positive relationships, sense of belonging, and a safe and inclusive environment. Our recent survey of 313 students in grades two through five shows that students feel understood, have caring, positive relationships with adults, and enjoy coming to school. To foster belonging, we've introduced student-led morning announcements through our broadcast club, student-led assemblies recognizing students who exemplify our core values, and host monthly Buddy Days and Spirit Days to strengthen connections. Based on parent feedback in the fall, we have also worked to highlight core values on display at home.
This, the example on, on this slide connects to personalized learning specifically through the concepts of identity and agency, by empowering students to take ownership of their learning and see themselves as active participants in the process. The weekly snapshot comes from a third-grade classroom. The front side includes goal-setting and tracking of independent work for the week, while the backside features a student reflection. These sheets are sent home weekly in the students' goal binders. Our next artifact highlights a fourth-grade Rocket Path, which guides students through each math unit by outlining key standards and vocabulary. A rocket symbol moves along the path to show the current focus, helping students stay engaged and aware of upcoming concepts. Students also set goals to track their progress on a data sheet in their binder mirroring the Rocket Path displayed on the classroom wall. As part of the student track, part of the students tracking their progress, after each lesson quiz, students and teachers meet to reflect on progress and discuss readiness, supporting goal-setting for the rest of the unit. Together, these practices cultivate a learning environment where students are not just passive recipients of information, but active agents in their learning education, or in their own educational journey, building both their sense of identity and agency. This concludes our learning report. It was a pleasure sharing information directly connected to Concord, and if there are no questions, I wish you a wonderful evening.
I have one question. In your written report that you put with it, you, you kinda called out that it's hard to keep the growth at some points. So what, what are the plans to, I mean, that's the hardest goal to meet, it's not the, it's not always the achievement, but the growth is. So what are the plans to, to help keeping growth going when kids are already achieving?
So, and some of those plans are already in place, and I think one, one nice thing that we have in Lindbergh Schools is that we do, we have the opportunity for acceleration, right, given what those students need. But in terms of some of the things that we've highlighted, and I think what has continued to show that we reached growth goals at the end of the year, is our dedication to data, right? And then through flex grouping, one of the things that, that happens with this is teachers use data to identify gaps in content areas that have already been taught, so we can kinda be cyclical during our wind time or intervention time. The nice part about these sessions is that, once you show mastery of, of a content topic, you usually need, like, two or three pieces, like, of progress monitoring data to show that the understanding is there, and then they can swiftly move to the next content area where they may need additional instructional support. I think we're also using MyPath specifically to, in terms, there's, there's, you know, it's broken into four quadrants, so making sure if we see gap areas or areas of weakness for a student, we can directly interact with MyPath so that they're getting targeted lessons into what they would need, and that actually supports both remedial growth and then extension in the classroom.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
So, the, the math K through two, the 45% that are less than one below, if you then compare, like, the next grade up at three to NWEA, there's only 18% that are below average by third grade. So how are you getting the kids who were less than one, who are, who are kinda, you know, just a little bit below? How, how are you moving them by third grade into, because the NWA scores are better? Are, are the tests just not really comparable? Or?
That is part of it. If you compare iReady and NWEA, it's not apples-to-apples in terms of how the measurement works. And I think some things that, and I don't know if this is what you're asking, but when you talk about growth in the classroom, we have students who are showing massive amounts of growth but might not be yet in the average, high average, or high range. So some of our biggest growers, if you think about, like, the normal growth in a school year plus your stretch growth, they actually might be exceeding their stretch growth in a school year but haven't met that average or higher range.
That's still a, I'm sorry. That's still a big celebration for that kid.
Well, and if you can't, you know, it, it doesn't have to be, if, if you're not average, we can't talk about it. We celebrate growth because if kids don't feel good about it, then, you know, it's gotta be intrinsic in terms of what we, we try to provide. And I think a big thing about Concord is we have really strong educators, and our Tier One instruction is, is really strong, and I think the evidence is indicated over the course of three years to see that we continually hit our 80% achievement and 70% growth rates.
Well, and isn't the iReady math test, like, an end-of-year test? Am I misunderstanding?
Well, there's, it's still, there's, it's a diagnosis that's given three times a year.
Right, but what I'm saying is-
But yeah, it's, it's based on where, where you're supposed to be at the end of the year.
And when you start, it's where you're, this is where you're supposed to be at the end of, you take it at the beginning of the year, and they say this is where you're supposed to be-
By the end of-
By the end of the year, but you take it at the beginning.
Right.
So that's why it doesn't look great at the beginning of the year, but then by winter it did. So there, is there a spring too?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's not, actually, the spring is in here. This is winter.
So that's where we wanna see the most green, right?
Yeah, we wanna see that number go in that direction. Obviously, we'd love for all of our kids to already be at grade level at the beginning of the year, but they're not. So, but it shows us where we need to go. So they're taking, hey, this is where you need to be at the end of the year, how many of you are there? But when we started this journey about student achievement around growth, it was to get personalized, you know? A lot of times when kids are already here, we don't stretch them. This gives us the data that says, hey, this kid's already here, we still gotta stretch them, and we still gotta grow. But then we also have to celebrate the kid that's below grade level, that's making huge gains, that hasn't got there, we need to celebrate that kid too and keep encouraging them to get better. But when you just think, snapshot in time, I take my state assessment, I'm either proficient or not, it just, that, that's not where that intrinsic comes from. That's, this is why we focus on this.
I made you go more than your two to three minutes.
You made it go like 10!
I was, I had to stop watch, otherwise I was good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anytime you have questions, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, and tonight, we get the bonus of hearing from the Idea Center. So Dr. Tracy Benneri-Cumes, would you like to come up and do your recognition and learning report?
Hi, too. Oh, there we go. I, too, will start with my students. So if I could have Brecken Lang come up and Fanfan Chow? Is that correct? Chow. 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 There we go. Come on up. I knew I had to practice that. So, we have a student from our PEGS program and from our LEAP program, so I'm gonna start with Brecken from our PEGS program, and then I'll talk about Fanfan from LEAP. So Brecken was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Brown, and she said he has constantly demonstrated sweetness, empathy, and reliability towards his peers since joining PEGS. Over the past couple years, we have observed significant growth in his executive functioning skills and academic performance. It's common for gifted students to experience challenges with executive functioning, often leading to difficulties such as organizing supplies and assignments, which can result sometimes in, in errors on tasks or assessments. But Brecken has made commendable efforts to utilize his planner, you ensure that every night you have it signed, and that's really helped in managing assignments and fostering positive routines that extend into the classroom. He is now making greater connections to his assignments and successfully applying those skills as he learns in the classroom to his academic work and interaction with others. He's also received numerous co-pilot awards this year for exceptional contributions as a supportive member of his classroom community, collaborating effectively with peers and teachers. And notably, he has taken on the initiative to assist fellow students in collecting their instruments from the strings area during the end-of-the-day pack-up, ensuring that they do not forget their instruments. Brecken brings positivity to our classroom environment, and we take great pride in his growth within the PEGS program at Lindbergh. Good job, Brecken.
Brecken, congratulations. We have a certificate recognizing you as student of the month, and then we also have a t-shirt for you as well. If you'll hang out here, otherwise you'll get a picture here in a second.
All right, and Fanfan is a student in our LEAP program, and she was recognized by Mrs. Gordon. And this is what Mrs. Gordon had to say about Fanfan. Fanfan has shown growth academically, creatively, and socially. According to Fanfan, she has made new friends. She has grown in seeing different talents in others while learning about different styles and cultures. Fanfan's skills in observing and appreciating others has helped her be inspired by others. Teachers report that Fanfan's growing confidence and comfort in herself has resulted in stronger risk-taking, more elaborate creativity, quiet leadership, more self-advocacy, a growing respect for collaboration, comfort in taking initiative, and an openness to embracing differences. She is a delight to have in class, especially because she embraces every opportunity as a chance to learn and grow. We so love having you in our program.
So Fanfan, we have a certificate for you, recognizing you as student of the month, and then we have a new t-shirt for you as well. All right, we're gonna do a quick picture, but we've gotta get in front of that airplane in art. So we gotta come over this way, Brecken. Over this way. There we go.
And then I'm going to recognize my Teacher of the Year for 2324, Shannon Bergman, if she could come up. And we are currently kind of missing her because she is home with a newborn, so we're looking forward to having her back in April. But to speak about what Shannon brings to our program, she really represents three key areas: instructional excellence, student support and advocacy, and leadership and enrichment. Some things that stand out with her instruction are her her instruction are her ability to differentiate her techniques to meet a variety of learning styles. Our PEGS classrooms tend to have a lot of different learning styles and learning needs, and she really adjusts to meet all those needs. She adapts her lessons to support all of our learners, including our twice-exceptional students, and really works to create an inclusive and welcoming student-centered environment. As far as student support and advocacy, I really wanna highlight that she is our third grade homeroom teacher, and that's a year that a lot of students join our PEGS program. And she welcomes them, helps them kind of figure out how it all works at the Idea Center, and really makes it a place where they can develop their executive functioning skills and start to move towards student autonomy and become part of our whole program. And then lastly, she has provided quite a lot of leadership to our program. She came in with a lot of experience with iReady, which was a new math program to us, and helped us learn that and be supportive of that. She's very collaborative with her team, giving them instruction in all the different things that she knows about students. And then last year, she was also our math team coach and helped to guide those students to success through a lot of fun activities. We appreciate her professionalism, her adaptability, and her passion for education.
Shannon, congratulations.
And our Support Staff of the Year, she is also home with a new baby, so she couldn't make it tonight. But we wanna recognize Maggie Dickinson, who was our part-time counselor. And I'll just say a couple words about Maggie. Despite her part-time status, she really works the work of a full-time counselor, meeting the needs of our gifted students, both in our LEAP and our PEGS programs. She really goes beyond her official responsibilities by connecting to every student on a personal level and helping to make sure that they feel part of the program, particularly addressing social-emotional learning and really creating an inclusive environment for our students. We're just very lucky to have her, and we're looking forward to when she comes back.
All right, switching gears, is this on? Okay. All right, so just thank you for letting me share a little bit about the gifted department today. When we look at the gifted department, it's not just the Idea Center, it is all of the gifted students in our district, which is over 800 students. And so we'll be looking kind of at a full picture. So, looking at our student growth and achievement, I just picked out little parts to look at. So I'm gonna look at our math and our reading scores from our winter test. And so gifted overall in the district, just on the NWA, 98.6% of our students are meeting that goal of being in the high-average or high-quintile target for math, and 99.7% for reading. Our compass goal for growth is that 70% of the students will be meeting that average, high-average, or high-quintile growth. And so when we look at this, I believe we're on track, but growth is a little bit harder when you're already in that very high level of achievement. But in the fall for our math, we had 59% meeting those goals. In winter, we're at 75.2% in math. And then in the fall, we had 58.4% meeting our reading goal, and we're at 60.11% in reading here at the winter. So I believe we're on track. We're meeting already in math, and I think reading will get there. We did last year, but it was tight in the same way. So if you go on to the next slide, it'll talk about some things that we're doing to support these goals, both at the Idea Center and in the broader picture. So one of the things that we do really throughout the district is to encourage math placement by proficiency, whether that's in small groups within classrooms and supporting that through the MTSS process, or through acceleration. We have an acceleration policy, and we work with schools to support that within their schools, if that is something that students need beyond what teachers can provide through differentiation in the classroom. Additionally, in PEGS particularly, we differentiate our standards in instruction, also in reading. And our PEGS students do not see a lot of exceeds expectations on their report cards, because once they start meeting an expectation, they go on to the next grade level of expectation. So that's something that helps us try to encourage that growth. When they're already performing at a higher level, we push the rigor for them. In regards to all of the students in gifted programming, we try to integrate math, reading, writing, social studies, and science skills into our LEAP curriculum. And in fact, last year, we did an item analysis of the fifth grade and sixth grade science assessments, the state science assessments, to see where our students were kind of missing the mark on certain themes in science. And we were very intentional at looking at our LEAP curriculum to see how we could embed some of those science concepts into our LEAP curriculum to kind of hit that for our gifted students as well. One of the things that our LEAP teachers are very intentional about is connecting with homeschools to support our students, not just the one day of the week that they're at LEAP, but also throughout the rest of the week. So having that communication back and forth and brainstorming support. And then, this is just kind of in the beginning stages, but we would like to continue working with proficiency scales and supporting teachers and instructional coaches with how to use the exceeds expectations component of proficiency scales to support in-class enrichment and acceleration, so that everybody, whether they're gifted or not, can reach those growth goals. So that's something we'll continue to work on as we develop capacity around that. For our Lindbergh Life Success Skills, I picked one that we are focused on at the Idea Center and one that we're looking at at the high school. So at the Idea Center, this is only our second year, so we're still kind of in that learning stage. And we really wanted to focus on building work ethic and effort in our building. So we have developed our three components of guiding behavior norms, which are to be responsible, be respectful, and be engaged. And at the beginning of the year, the teachers work to develop a behavior matrix around these goals. Those are posted throughout the building so that students know what their expectations are in different areas of the building, and we can reinforce that. And then we also have a positive office referral system. We do call that our co-pilot system. And as of this week, we're actually closer to 90 positive behavior referrals. When a student receives a positive behavior referral, their name goes in our e-note. They are recognized with a certificate, and then they're recognized also with a co-pilot bracelet, so they can show that they've done something to make a difference at our school. For our high school, we have a new gifted resource teacher this year, and that's really expanded our capacity around helping our high schoolers understand who they are as a gifted individual and to develop some identity and agency. And I just listed one small component of the things that the gifted resource teachers are doing, and that is their power lunch events. And so you can see a list of all the power lunch events they did this year. Some of them are about getting ready for college, some are test prep, some are really unique to gifted characteristics like perfectionism and kind of understanding who you are. But then some are just social fun things to help the students build those connections with other gifted individuals at the high school. And it's really helped broaden those connections at the high school. All right, next slide. And then for our high-quality teachers and employee well-being, we are really four buildings, but we're one team. So if you look in the upper-left corner, that is our Idea Center team. Those are LEAP and PEGS teachers, but they're really one team in that building. Many of our LEAP teachers teach related arts for PEGS, and one of our PEGS teachers is the testing coordinator for our LEAP testing process. So we have a lot more intertwined support than, really more than we've ever had before. But I also wanted to highlight our parent-teacher groups. We have two parent-teacher groups that really help us feel connected, valued, supported. We have a PEGS parent-teacher group and a LEAP parent-teacher group. The two pictures on the bottom show our PEGS, our guardians of the Idea Center, which are people from both groups, that help our Idea Center, and they are putting the floor in, in our gaga pit. And you can actually see, I believe that's Breckin, in the lower-right, enjoying the gaga pit after the floor was put in. And that just, that support makes a huge difference for our program. In the upper-right, that is several middle-school parents dressed up as characters from Clue so that we could do a live Clue reenactment game. And so when, when parents support teachers and parents support children, it really increases that sense of well-being. All right, next slide. And as far as our student satisfaction, this is really hard to read, but the colors are what is important. We do a belonging survey in LEAP in our elementary LEAP program a couple times a year. And this question asks our students, do you have somebody at LEAP who you can talk to if you have a problem? Is there an adult you can talk to? When you look at the blue, the blue shows that these are students who said they had more than one adult they could talk to at LEAP. The yellow shows that they had at least one, and it's by grade level. So you can see that on our fourth-grade level, the upper-right, there are a few kids that are saying right now that they don't have anybody, but we know exactly who those kids are, and we know that we can be very intentional about connecting with those students and making sure that by the next time they take this survey, they do have an adult that they can connect with. All right, the next slide. I forgot to set my timer, and I don't know if any of these videos will work, so maybe we'll try the one in the middle, Colin, and see if that one will work. Just wanted to get some words from our students about what they think about our program.
My name is Archie, and I go to the Idea Center. Two, one thing I like about the Idea Center is that fits your needs very perfectly. It may not do it fully, but it will do, it will, it will as best as it can, which will be very, very a lot. So that's one thing I like about the Idea Center.
Did you want to say your other thing, too?
I, the two things were practically the same.
Okay, good. So, and I can, I can make those other videos available in the future, but just, I do believe we have a lot of very satisfied students, and that's an example of one of them. All right, the next slide. And of course, when you add a video, it makes it hard to go to the next slide. All right. And I think this might be my last slide, if I remember correctly. I wanted to highlight math for personalized learning. iReady has lent itself to ability for us to differentiate by competency. So in our PEGS program, all of our students are grouped based on their math competency, and sometimes that happens within the class. In the lower-right, you can see an example of a math class that has two groups that are happening at the same time. But sometimes it happens through acceleration. And so we look at acceleration for the whole district, and we'll consider that for students if they are showing that competency to move on to the next level. And if you look in the lower-left corner, those students are all students that have been accelerated in math. Some of them are PEGS and some of them are LEAP, and they have gone on to a math counts competition. They just won the regional level. And then our student in the far-left, in purple, just won the state competition and will be going on to the national competition. So Charles will be competing in Washington, DC, because of what we're doing to differentiate math and to accelerate math based on students' ability. And I think that really speaks to individualized learning to provide that opportunity. All right. And there's my reports there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I was curious about one thing. All the acceleration, do you have any, I guess, idea of how many students are accelerated above grade level? Or since it's on particular competencies, is that just too hard of a question to answer?
So in general, if we're just looking at placing a student in another class for acceleration, I would say starting at around fourth grade, it's gonna be between six and 12 students, depending on the grade level. When we're looking at what's happening within the class, and Mr. Meckel talked about how a lot of times they're doing this within the class because they can group, have flexible grouping. I'm not tracking that, but, so I know there's a lot more than what we're tracking. I just track the actual full grade level skips. Yep. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move to 4.05, Student Representative Report. Mr. RJ Del Rosario.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna try and keep this short. I know there's some students out here who are very excited to get back to spring break. To start, the Lindbergh High School students from the three respective music programs, orchestra, band, and choir, attended the district solo and small ensemble competition on March 1st. So for context, these students have months to put together a musical event to compete with, either in the form of an individual solo or an ensemble comprised of a few talented players. So over 80 events were taken in this competition on March 1st. And while everyone did perform very well, I am pleased to report that 36 of these events are going on to the state level, which means they'll compete in April at Mizzou. And some more of this exciting news, the Lindbergh racket ball program traveled to Portland, Oregon in late February to participate in the national championships. So Lindberg came back with amazing distinction of being ranked number two in the entire country with a total score. And Lindbergh High School senior Eli McColey won first place for boys singles in the gold division, meaning he is the top-ranked boys' racket ball player in the nation, which I thought was amazing. Yeah. Lindbergh students also won numerous awards across the board, and four players also earned All-American honors. So we all now have that distinction at Lindbergh. I also attended the Board Candidate Forum this past Tuesday, where two of you attended, and we know two of those seats are up for reelection. It was a really great opportunity, and I really do believe that knowing more about how this system works and what candidates have to say is important for creating this change. So I discussed with some of the student moderators as well on their takeaways, and we both agreed that maybe involving some of the students at the high school and the middle school more over some of these events would be really important, so they understand how the system works. So we talked about maybe implementing or using the Lindbergh broadcast program to maybe inform more of them on that. I also discussed with Cochran the best way to further reach the students, so I can best report back to you guys. So we talked about maybe using the student e-note so I can communicate with them better, or other ideas like that. Finally, Laura and I met up with the student advisory boards from both the Idea Center and Concord last week. One of my favorite parts from these meetings is seeing how each individual school is. They are very unique, they have all their own personalities. And it was, especially with two in one day, it was really exciting to see those two. So, in the Idea Center, we discussed students, the effectiveness of the gift, uh, I'm sorry, I'm speaking very fast right now. In the Idea Center, we discussed with the students the effectiveness of the gifted learning programs, including how it helps them learn and develop skills not taught inside these regular classrooms. In Concord, we identified the importance of library access with the students and how books can teach them these valuable life lessons and accept different mindsets as well. In both schools, we also discussed the use of AI schools with Lindbergh's school sanctioned securely AI, and students all agreed that Lindbergh's learning strategies provide the tools they need. Of course, we know it wouldn't be a student board meeting without a heated discussion of school lunch, so that went over very well. Overall, meetings were very productive, and as our world continues changing, Lindbergh's commitment to teaching the skills of the future, like this AI technology, provides, or proves that the exceptional resources we have are put to very good use. Thank you.
Thank you, RJ. Good report. Okay, so now it's time for a short break, but we wanna wish you all a safe, fun, happy, and relaxing spring break. Thank you. You may exit unless you wanna stay for the business part, which most people do exit. So, go ahead and go, take your pictures out in the lobby, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Yeah, we guessed because they said they ran them small, so we went up the size, but that one went up way big.
Okay. 5.0 resolutions, there are none this evening. 6.0, citizen communications regarding agenda items, there are none this evening. 7.0 communications, 7.01 is calendar of events, Ms. Vetter.
Thank you. So school will be closed tomorrow, March 14th, and then again next week, March 17th through the 21st for spring break, so we hope everyone enjoys that. Teaching and learning advisory meets on March 25th. Also on March 25th, Kennerly has their music program. April 2nd is the Lindbergh Schools Foundation Scholarship Night at the high school. Student life advisory, as well as the high school chamber ensemble, perform on April 3rd. Election Day for school board and local municipalities is Tuesday, April 8th. Sappington's music program is on April 10th. The Lindbergh School 75th Anniversary Gala, Gala, however you pronounce it, is Friday, April 11th. Tickets are required and are still available. April 14th is the high school's Night of Jazz. The finance board advisory meets on April 15th, and then the middle schools will have their percussion concerts. Dressel Elementary's music program is April 16th. And then our next board meeting will be Thursday, April 17th. We will also have a board workshop that day.
Okay, 7.02 is report of meetings, just for any board members to talk about meetings that they've attended.
Okay, I'll go first. Well, first, okay, not a meeting, but I was able to attend the last performance of the musical, and so I wanted to celebrate our student representative again because all of the performers did great, but you did a wonderful job as well. So, that was fabulous. I love our new auditorium. Thank you, community. And then I also attended the first meeting of the Gifted Education Identification Task Force. We're gonna have several more meetings wrapping up sometime this summer. And then Kristi and I were able to attend MSBA, Missouri School Board Association's Advocacy Day on Tuesday this week. In the morning, we heard from Dr. Carla Esslinger, Chairperson of, Commissioner, I think, actually, of DESI, and got a lot of good information there. Also heard from a state senator about some legislation that she has introduced that would impact several things in public education. And then when we were armed with all of that information, we had a chance to go over to the Capitol and to interact with our legislators. Kristi and I were able to speak with our representative, Brad Christ, and he was kind enough to take us onto the floor of the House. That was exciting to get to see that. And then after that, we had a chance to go over and watch the beginning of the session starting in the Senate that day, and one of the first bills that was discussed, there was some debate going on with our state, one of our state senators in the district, Doug Beck, and he was strongly advocating for firefighters and teachers and nurses. So it was wonderful to see both of our represent, well, we have more than just two, but two, at least two in both of the chambers, and had a great day and learned a lot. So, glad for that opportunity.
Yeah, I just wanna share that Rachel did a fantastic job advocating for our public school district with Representative Christ. So I was really, really proud of her, of how she said we'd prefer one open enrollment bill over the other, and talked to him about that. So it was, it was very good, very good. One of the bills that we do wanna watch, and I don't wanna make it too political, but is Senate Bill 177, and it would really support public schools. So, against char, in regard to charter schools. So keep your eye on that. Anybody else?
Yes, I have two meetings to speak on. One was last week, the Lindbergh Schools Foundation Board had their board meeting. And as I know, I always say, they're just doing such tremendous work and are continuing to grow. And one thing that was going on at the meeting was finalizing the scholarship winners for this year. And they, so at the end of it, there will be 118 scholarships that will be awarded to Lindbergh seniors this year with a total value of $238,250. So it's just so exciting to see all of these resources going to our kids. And since the inception of the foundation, they have awarded scholarships of over-
And since the inception of the foundation, they have awarded scholarships of over $1 million. So it's, we now hope that we can just keep supporting the foundation to continue supporting students. I also attended SSD Governing Council, so bear with me, I have a few things to report on that. We will be, so just a reminder for those who don't know, the Governing Council is board representatives from each of the partnering districts that help kind of counsel what's happening in SSD. We, as a governing council, elect the school board members for SSD, and so we had school board elections at the meeting last week. They are staggered, their placements are staggered as well. So last week were elections for Region 3, which is Pat, or excuse me, Parkway. No, sorry, Region 4 is Parkway. And then the Region 3 is Ferguson, Florissant, Pattonville, Riverview Gardens. So there was one applicant for the open spot for the Parkway District, and so she was voted on. And unfortunately, there were no applicants for the other region. So the way that works out is that the current SSD school board will appoint somebody to that spot for a one-year term, and then the spot will open up again next year for elections. Uh, let's see. They, we talked a lot about the budget again because the new fiscal year budget will be set to approve at the next meeting in June. And so the Board of Education for SSD will approve it at their meeting in May, and then it is brought to the Governing Council for us, our approval in June. And we've talked a lot about the budget over the past year for SSD. Dr. Macklin continues to just say this is a marathon, and they are working very hard at making sure that the budget is continuing to, as he continues to say, they're riding the ship. They have a preliminary budget set, and their goals continue to make sure that their target goal for their fund balance is 35%. It's currently at 41%. And so they are continuing to make adjustments to make sure that it continues to get into that range without going way beyond that range, because that's kind of the struggle that they're facing at SSD right now, is that the expenses are continuing to bring them into a trajectory that would bring that fund balance way down. So they're making changes and adjustments to, um, hope that it stays at 35% over the next years. I just want to give a shout out to Dr. Macklin. He was a winner of the Massa Award, which is the Missouri Association of School Administrators for the Greater St. Louis Region, and that just is an emerging superintendence award. So it awards superintendents in their second or third year that show great leadership and strengths for their particular school district. And I know he's been giving it, been given a huge task with, it's such a big district and with an almost billion-dollar budget a year, like, it's just a lot of work. So congratulations to him, as I know that it's a significant, you know, leadership award. So with that, um, that's pretty much it. With, one more thing about the budget is that they're just really trying to reflect on a conservative budget specifically because of the senior tax freeze and Senate Bill 727, which we all know is something that all school, public school districts are looking at. And so they're just going to continue to try to stay very transparent with their budgeting and continue to make it digestible for the public so that it's better understood. And if you have any other questions, you can always come find me. Thanks.
Excellent. Anybody else?
Yeah, I attended the Standards-Based Grading Task Force, where we continue to look at how and whether and when standards-based grading could be rolled out in the secondary levels. And so that is a really robust conversation that's happening in that room every time we meet, and it's been, involves educators, teachers, students, and it's been really a good part to be a part of that as we try to figure that out. The other meeting I attended was with Rachel and Kristi. We attended a meeting at EdPlus on, that really talked about how school finance works and how some of these legislative bills affect it. And so there, there was a consensus, I think, in the room, there were a lot of large school districts there, that we need to do a little more work explaining to the public how the state funds some money for schools, you get local funding for others, and then when you look at all the legislation that's happening, it might not be that you're ideologically opposed to any of these, but you have to look at how the finances are affected because with open enrollment and charter schools, and then you also add a freeze on, they want to lower income taxes, they want to lower all these, the personal property tax, and they want to lower and slowly step down assessed values. And while each one of those things may seem great and you may not ideologically be opposed to them, they're going to have a huge effect on school finance. I mean, decimate, if they all happen at once, decimate public schools. And so we have to be very careful. And so that was what kind of came out of that meeting, was that we really need to start educating the public a little bit about why those bills affect schools that way, so that people understand that this isn't just, oh, I hate charter schools. It's, this is the problem with it. And so we, as a board, have asked Dr. Lake to start incorporating that into some of his PTG meetings, and he is, and just listening and learning tours so that people can start to understand that a little bit, because it's hard to understand. It took three hours with a lot of people in the room who already know about school finance to really kind of get it.
And there's been a lot of meetings for MSBA over the past two months that talk a lot about school finance and how legislation is moving forward. So it'll be interesting to watch how this plays out, for sure.
I do. So, once a year, we get to recognize our Board of Education. This is Board of Education Recognition Month. Everyone here is a volunteer, and so we want to thank you for your time and your effort in the many, many hours. It can be a very rewarding job, but it can also be a very thankless job. So I just personally want to say thank you for all that you do for the students and staff in this community and always having its best interest at all of your thoughts and your conversations and the service that you provide for our students, and just very fortunate to work with all seven of you, even though Andy is not able to be here and RJ as well. So we are just so, so fortunate to have you seven guiding this district. So thank you for your service. And we are going to take a quick picture and up front of the dais here for Board Recognition Month. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, 7.04 is the Review of Upcoming Board of Education Meeting Agendas. Back to you, Ms. Vetter.
Thank you. So we'll meet again on Thursday, April 17th for a board workshop and regular Board of Education meeting. The workshops will include compass updates and budget planning for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year. Regular Board of Education meetings tentative agenda items are to receive election returns and declare results, oath of newly elected board members, reorganization of the board, regular business items, any board policy reviews or updates, and Limberg High School is scheduled to be here for recognitions. These meetings are open to the public and patrons are encouraged to attend.
Thank you very much. 7.05, MSBA Board Report.
To the March edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin this month with a focus on school finance. With very real concerns of a government shutdown in March and uncertainty in general with federal funding, there are a few specific actions districts should be taking to claim federal dollars. MSBA's Senior Director of School Finance, Lynda Quinley, explains.
Hello, welcome to this month's Board Report, and this time, we're going to talk a little bit about finance with you, very specifically focusing on what's happening at the federal level and state level related to some of our primary grants and funding. So just a key piece of information for you to know is that the recent halts or slowdowns or possibilities of those on our federal grant dollars was not about our entitlement grants like Title I and special education. Those were really more about discretionary grants. And so while we were not concerned about losing those main dollar sources for us, we were concerned about loss of discretionary. The good news is that those have been lifted right now and all money is flowing. But we want to talk just for a second about how to help your leaders make sure that you're getting all of those revenues and what you do need to be watching. Our greater concern at this point in time is a possible slowdown or shutdown of the federal government, which would then slow down or delay significantly your federal program dollars. Help make sure that you are timely and consistently claiming those federal dollars, so that if there is a slowdown or a shutdown, you don't incur any kind of a cash flow delay. The end goal is to have those federal dollars in your pocket as quickly as you can after you spend them, so that if something happens at the federal level and there is a slowdown or a shutdown, you've got your cash instead of the feds having your cash. Keep in mind that as you go into next budget cycle, their allocations will continue to come. The leadership in your district will be watching for those allocations and planning to fully use those allocations. Our recommendation is going to be to continue next year like we're asking you to end this year, and just be really intentional about getting those federal dollars spent, spent early and claimed quickly.
The best practice is to claim your federal program dollars at least quarterly, if not monthly, keeping the funds coming in soon after they are spent by the district. Make sure the district spends federal dollars first, saving state and local dollars to use as needed. Contact Lynda Quinley for finance questions and watch the weekly and the MSBA website for updates and information about upcoming financial webinars. MSBA's Spring Virtual Meeting was held recently, and it featured Dr. Phil Gore, a former Seattle area school board member. Dr. Gore is also a nationally recognized researcher, author, and speaker on school governance. The title of Dr. Gore's presentation was Building a Culture of Trust. Dr. Gore said that building trust and the work of school boards is critical.
School boards do matter when it comes to public education. In fact, we may matter now as much or more than ever. We are one of those last bastions of local control, local governance, and we are the entity that ensures we're creating a more democratizing student population and young adults to take our place in years to come. Trust is just as important or more important than it's ever been before when it comes to this work. In school board development, we often tell board members that they are stewards of the public's two most precious resources: their children and their money.
And last, but certainly not least, it's March, which means it's School Board Recognition Month. All of us at MSBA sincerely want to thank each and every one of you for all that you do. Your hard work and dedication to your schools and communities are appreciated, and your commitment to all students does not go unnoticed. Visit the MSBA website for materials to help celebrate. So with that, thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in April for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right. Thank you, Brandt. 8.0 Special Reports. 8.01 is Cabinet Updates. Joel Schabel, would you like to start?
Yes, we had a finance committee meeting on that beautiful day, Tuesday, and we went over the, early this time in the finance. We're kind of between budget years, we're starting the new one, trying to close up the old one, waiting for some information from St. Louis County so we can predict next year's budget, and we, so we didn't really have a lot to talk about as far as finance, but we did review all of the items on the board agenda in detail and to get ready for tonight's meeting. Did we have the facility one between the last meeting, or, okay, I couldn't remember if it was before last meeting or not. Facilities Advisory also met, oh yes, that's right, because Dr. Lake was out of town. Scott and I had the Facility Advisory meeting last Wednesday. Scott pretty much ran it, that's why I'm trying to forget about it, but we talked about Prop R and gave some updates to the members on that. We also had our Energy Manager, Roe from Navitas, come and give a report to the committee about how our energy savings has looked over the past four years. You know, we've been with that program for a four-year period. We talked a little bit about the increase in energy rates that are upcoming. Ameren has a rate increase on the table. We've seen one from MSD, and of course, our trash and other services are all increasing their fees. So it's important, especially on the energy side, for them to keep an eye on how we're spending our electric in our buildings. And we have some great campuses, but if we don't stay on top of it, that can get out of control. So that was a good subject, and I think that was pretty much it. A lot of excitement on where we're going with Prop R and the progress that is happening with Crestwood probably opening the gym in late April. So it's a big thing.
Okay, Dr. Uncanny?
Oh, I'm sorry, Colin.
There you go.
Good job. Our committee, our team did not meet because our meeting date coincided with the facilities meeting, of which several of us are also members, but we did make available the personnel report online, and our members looked at that and emailed me with any questions. We'll meet again in April.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dominic Jagi.
The Technology didn't meet this month. We'll meet again in April, at the end of April.
Dr. Ter Sparks?
Teaching and Learning meets the Tuesday after spring break. We haven't met since the last meeting. And then Student Life, we've been studying three things over the course this year: Diploma Plus, artificial intelligence, and social emotional resources. So that's been an ongoing conversation, and in the last meeting, we wrapped up some recommendations from the advisory as we go into implementation in the next school year.
Thank you. Beth Johnston, did you have anything?
I'm just kidding. I do not. Thank you. Just kidding. Not yet, maybe next year.
9.0 Action Items by Consent. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Hearing None, do we have a motion to approve the March 13th, 2025 action items by consent as presented?
Still moved.
Second. Megan is the motion, and Julia is the second. Rachel, sorry. All I heard was a voice over there, so, sorry. Let's see, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, 10.0 Individual Action Items. We have two for this evening. 10.01 is the Approval of Construction Management at Risk, otherwise known as CMAR, for BSI Guaranteed Maximum Price, otherwise known as GMP, for Kennerly Elementary. To open the discussion, do I have a motion to approve the BSI GMP Amendment of $13,196,500 for Kennerly Elementary funded from the 2024 Prop R bond proceeds and authorize the administration to negotiate and enter into a contract as presented?
Still moved.
Second. Julia was the motion, and Megan was the second. Discussion or questions?
I just want to recognize the architect for these, both of these buildings in the audience tonight, so thank you for coming. And I wanted to note that this is called an amendment because we have a master agreement with BSI, and as we move forward on projects, there is an amendment to the contract that adds that, so that's why it's considered an amendment. So these projects did go out to bid into the general market. We have our vendor registry software that we put all of our bids out so that they can be highly competitive, also with this, our contractor and, I'm sure, the architect stirs up interest in our project and, so that we can get competitive bids on this. The bids were opened, I think, on the 28th, it was a Friday afternoon.
Julia was the motion, and Megan was the second. Discussion or questions?
I just want to recognize the architect for these, both of these buildings in the audience tonight, so I thank you for coming. And we, I wanted to note that this is called an amendment because we have a master agreement with BSI, and as we move forward on ser, on projects, there is an amendment to the contract that adds that. So, that's why it's considered an amendment. So, these projects did go out to bid into the general market. We have our vendor registry software that we put all of our bids out so that they can be highly competitive. Also with this, our contractor and, I'm sure the architect stirs up interest in our project and, so that we can get competitive bids on this. The bids were opened, I think, on the 28th, it was a Friday afternoon. Took about most of the afternoon because there's a lot of different work categories in these projects. So, they are opened in public. The contractors, BSI, and then the subcontractors attend, and the bids are opened publicly and written down. And then BSI and Scott and his team take the numbers back and review them, make sure all, everybody's dotted their i's and crossed their t's as far as the paperwork that's required to be submitted with a bid. And they were tabulated, and these are the numbers that have come in. So, we are happy with the early estimates that BSI put on the table. They always give us a very early estimate, and pretty much they were true to their estimates. So, that's a great thing for BSI. If you want to say anything about that. So, you have two in front of you. This one, of course, is for Kennerly, and the next one is for Long. And with your approval on these this evening, we will work to sign them, and I think they're already out of the properties, getting ready to make things happen. So...
So, you may have a question. So, both of them, so, Kennerly actually came in lower than what we had anticipated, but Long came in a little higher, but together, they both equal our budget that we had for both of them, where we had anticipated. So, we feel, we feel good about these numbers, so...
And the Long one is a little higher because we have a stoplight to deal with, oh, we'll have a stoplight to deal with there, so...
And we're going from cafinesiums to a gym and a cafeteria.
Repeat of Crestwood, and you can see the progress on that, and it's just amazing.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Board, all in favor of approving this amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 6 to 0. 10.02 is the approval of construction management at risk, CMAR, BSI Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP for Long Elementary. To open discussion, do I have a motion to approve the BSI-GMP amendment of $14,386,200 for Long Elementary funded from the 2024 Prop R bond proceeds and authorize the administration to negotiate and enter into a contract as presented?
Still moved? Second.
Is it Julie or Rachel?
Rachel.
And who was my second? Jen? All right. Discussion or questions for Joelle?
I just want to add, I should have said Arthur Floyd from BRS, which is Building Resource Studios. It's, you know, one of our three architects working with us on these projects for Prop R 2024.
I just want to say thank you for your work, because these buildings are not just about separating a cafeteria and a gymnasium. It's about creating more space for learning that's appropriate and gives every student a place to have, especially their pullouts, to have their own learning space instead of being shoved in a corner or in a hallway somewhere. And so, this is more about, let's have more, more room at lunch. This is about real student learning. So, thank you for the work.
And I also want to note, if you look at the data in the board packet, I think what I, another thing I like about the CMAR process, again, it's an open and transparent process, is the line-by-line detail of each of the work categories for the project. It's an interesting thing to look at if you haven't looked at that.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 6-0. 11.0, reports. 11.01 for the record. We have one for the record report this evening, 11.01.01 USDA triennial, I can't say that word, I've tried, Child Nutrition Review, 2024 to 2025. Board members, you can direct any questions to, to Joelle. There are no 11.0 items. We'll move to 12.0. 12.0 is a return to closed session. We've already conducted that, so we don't need to do that. 13.0 is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn board meeting 1613?
Still moved?
Second.
Jen, and then Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 6-0. Board meeting 1613 is adjourned.